David, we ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, we'll call to the order the September 19, 2013, regular meeting of the West Sacramento Planning Commission. If I can get Commissioner Moore to lead us in.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, God's just for all.
A reminder, anyone wishing to address the commission should fill out a request to address form and present it to the clerk, and I have none as of yet, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Also, as a reminder, presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the commission, the commission is prohibited by law from discussing issues not on the agenda or brought to them at this time. So we'll go to item B, any correspondence to staff communication, David?
Yes, I do, thank you Chair Galvan. Actually, I have more than a few items to report on this evening. Since our last meeting, the council has met two times, and their meeting prior to last night, they actually, they heard an appeal that was brought on the 309 F Street conditional use permit and variance project that your commission approved at your last meeting. The council did vote to unanimously uphold your decision on that particular project, and so we do expect that project to proceed. Also, last night, council approved the final map for the, those related to the self-sarge project that's going to go in north of Lowe's and the Westbridge Plaza. That was a tentative map that your commission approved also earlier this year. And also last night, an important milestone for us, and part of, we appreciate the planning commission's prior input, is the council did vote to approve our final housing element, and so we will be sending that to Department of Housing and Community Development, and that will complete our housing element cycle, you know, for this year. And since we were able to complete it, we will be picking that up, not for another eight years at this time. And then also, I do want to note tonight that we have Cindy with us tonight as our, as our clerk. This will be her, likely be our last meeting with us. She is moving on to other duties within the city. And Katie Rogers, who you may know, will be our clerk for our meeting, so want to make sure we get that out tonight before the end of the meeting, so that everyone can thank Cindy for her contributions to the planning commission over her tenure here, and she certainly won't be going far, but she's moving on to bigger and better things. So that will conclude staff communications.
So on behalf of the planning commission, I do want to thank you Cindy, and for putting up with those last minute phone calls, requests for documents, and, and holding our hand, so thank you very much. I'm sorry to lose you, but I'm, I'm sure you're going on to bigger and better things, so thank you.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with all of you.
Item number C, we on C, here we go. Disclosure of ex parte communications. Start to my left, anything? No. Consent agenda, consideration and approval of the minutes from the August 15, 2013 Planning Commission. Any issues with the minutes?
I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Moore, seconded by Commissioner Sandin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Abstained. Commissioner Olson, and it carries. That'll take us, David, to the regular agenda and the public workshop on the proposed indoor go-kart facility.
Yes, Associate Planner Kathy Allen will present this item.
Thank you Kathy.
Good evening Chairman Galvan and members of the commission. This item is a proposal for an indoor go-kart track, which would be located in a portion of an industrial building, which is located at 1430 Enterprise Boulevard. The project would utilize approximately 65,000 square feet of that building, and of that space, approximately 48,000 square feet would be for the track itself, and the remaining 17,000 square feet for the commercial area and offices. The applicant plans on operating the facility Monday through Thursday from noon to 10:00, Fridays from 11:00 to midnight, Saturdays from 10:00 to midnight, and Sundays 10:00 to 9:00. The facility would use Sodi RX-7 go-karts. These are powered by E85 biofuel. Initially, staff did express some concerns regarding noise from the gas-powered carts for both the public and the employees that work there, and because of that, staff did ask the applicant to conduct a noise study for the project. The noise study was conducted at the applicant's sister facility, which is in Burlingame, and is approximately the same size in terms of square footage as the one they're proposing here. The measured noise levels showed 83 decibels at the track level, 36 decibels in the lounge area. The noise levels at the track level are within OSHA levels. However, as an extra precaution, the employees will be required to wear OSHA-rated headsets to further protect their hearing from the noise created amongst, created from the carts themselves. The reason for the difference in the noise level is there will be a, a sound wall between the lounge area and the cart area, so that the noise level will be lower for the office workers there and the guests waiting to go on the track. Because of the gas-powered carts, staff did request additional information regarding how air circulation was going to be at the facility, to make sure the air quality was of proper standards for both employees and guests. The applicant has informed us that the facility would include several, seven large exhaust fans that move 150,000 cubic feet per minute of air, which will allow for a complete air exchange in their facility every 10 minutes. The go-karts themselves are also equipped with catalytic converters, which further help reduce the carbon monoxide emissions, and the carbon monoxide levels will be monitored inside the building to make sure that they always remain within OSHA standards. The facility itself, the applicant is proposing to add an additional 51 parking stalls. This will allow direct access to the facility for the patrons visiting it. There is a, a building directly to the east that is the home of Prologix, and after speaking, the applicant, after speaking with the owners of that building, did decide voluntarily to reduce the number of parking stalls at the facility. They took out the easternmost row, and that was so that the trucks visiting Prologix and wanting to park on the east side, that there would not be conflict between cars and trucks In terms of the patrons visiting the facility, anyone ages eight and up would be able to drive the cars, however, children between the ages of eight and 12 will be restricted to only driving the kid carts, which have a maximum speed limit of 15 miles an hour, and the kid carts don't mingle with the adult carts. Children between the ages of 12 and 18 are allowed to drive the adult carts, as long as they've completed their two-hour driving school. The only time when they don't have to do that is if they're over the age of 16 and already have a driver's license. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions for you. Also, the applicant and his representatives are here in the audience and would be happy to further enlighten you. Thank you.
Before we get to that, see if the commission has any questions. My last question, Commissioner Olson?
Yeah, just one quick question. What kind of vibration does that cause to the building? I noticed you have a, a wall that borders on the vacant space here. Is that a concern possibly?
It possibly might be a little bit of a concern, but we are going to actually-
Excuse me? So, we're going to take commissions, or questions to Kathy and David for now, and then we'll open it to the applicant?
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Sorry about that, sir.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have the applicant respond to that particular question when his turn comes, if that would please the commission.
Go ahead Russ.
Thanks. Kathy, this, it appears that the staff met with the tenants of logistics on September 10th. Okay, to, to help explain my question, I'm looking at the map number two, which is at the front entrance, and I'd like, I'd like to know why that was highlighted, and whether or not you can address my, my concern about that prior to us moving in to the workshop. For the commission's benefit, on, on the map, near the front door, there's a triangle labeled number two, that. That's, that's actually my question right there, is, I would like some explanation or clarification of what that is.
Oh, the, the bubbling, what that, what that refers to is a change that was made to the original drawing?
Okay. Okay, so there was a change made?
Yeah, so what that, yeah, what that reflects is what Kathy mentioned, which is there was originally parking on that double row down the center, but-
Gotcha.
Those dimensions conflicted with the loading of the, on Prologix.
Thank you. I just didn't understand that. Thanks.
I only have one question, and it's kind of a technical question, but if you have a, a space this large and this many parking stalls, there's one handicap space is all they're going to have to provide, you would think that out of 60 spots, we'd have to have more than that. I don't remember the exact equation that goes with that. The only handicap spot I see, and I don't even know if it gets them into their building, but it's up there at the top, just to the right of number two, that little number two that we were talking about. If that's even their parking spots, and if it's not, then they don't have any handicap parking in their facility.
The parking, when we go to the building permit phase, will be checked, and if they don't have adequate handicap spaces, they'll be required to configure it-
I understand. Probably be a good thing to have on this when it comes back to us, though. If they haven't already thought of that.
So, and I actually do have one question, Kathy, you may be able to answer this, or the applicant answer when he comes up, is, just with the late night, you know, patronage on the weekends, is there a, a security component requirement, or will they have security on grounds, and maybe that's a question for the applicant?
The applicant will be able to answer that for you.
Appreciate that. So at this time, if you could come up, sir. Apologize for the abruptness.
Okay. My name is David Robison, and I've been operating the go-kart racer in Burlingame for 10 years. We have had 350,000 different customers race at our facility, and they're all happy customers, returning customers, which is why we want to bring the same thing up here. We do have handicap parking places on the drawings. I don't know if they show correctly, but they are there, and they're actually right next to our front door. And as far as the noise to the building next to us, we do, we're going to do a similar thing to the wall on the building next, or on the adjacent piece of building next to us, that we do to our lounge area to make it pretty much soundproof, so the customer in the building adjacent to us won't hear us. So it should be virtually silent. Our lounge area is a place where we make it really quiet for people to hang out and have parties, and birthday parties, and company parties, and things like that, and we don't want to hear the go-karts there, but when they're racing, of course, we want the go-karts to run well and fast and stuff. But we do have a very good soundproof wall system that we've used, and it's, it works very well for us. And I'd love to answer any other questions you might have.
I just had the one question about the late nights, and I'm assuming that's a youthful crowd on, on Friday and Saturday nights, late at night, is there a-
Um, our average, in Burlingame, our average customer is about 32, surprisingly. It's not as young as people think. We do have a bit of a late night crowd. I'm not going to say it's that much, though. We, we, Friday nights tend to be pretty slow up until 8:00, and then we do get a little bit of a rush from 8:00 to 10:00 or 10:30. But usually, our last hour that we're open between 11:00 and 12:00, we typically only have five or six people come in during that hour, so it really doesn't stay that busy that late. We also do enforce any kind of alcohol issues. We have breathalyzers on the track and at our front counter, which does discourage some of the, we'll call it crazier people, from, from coming to our facility late.
Any other questions? Russ?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I had a, just a question regarding a clarification, the air circulation system, you're able to move 150 cubic, 150,000 cubic-
150,000 cubic feet of air per minute.
So that's movement, and then there's the comment that it's complete exchange. By complete exchange, I, I interpret that as there's a complete change-out of air from the outside to the inside.
What we do is we suck all the air, or we, we move air in at one end of the building and blow it out at the other end. So you're correct in saying it's not going to be a perfect 100% exchange, but it is 100% of volume every 10 minutes, and because the flow is going all the way across, starting at one end, and then nothing else can be blown out at that end, it doesn't leave the building until the other end. It's pretty, it's, it's pretty complete as a complete exchange. We also actually start the air coming in where most of the customers are, and make it leave where the, the least people are and the least employees. So the air starts out clean by where most people are, and where it's leaving the building is where nobody ever is normally.
So there's no recirculation of the air?
There is not, and we are not heating or cooling the track area either. We, we will run swamp coolers on this, in the summer, but we are not running heating or air conditioning on the track area.
My other question was regarding the, the drive aisle, and you're, you're in an unfortunate spot here, that you're, you're off the main road behind another building, and you're kind of tucked back in there. I'm unclear as to which the, which is the main drive aisle in, ingress or egress onto the site.
Where the stoplight is, is probably the main aisle to come in and out, and I, I, I know that we're going to attempt to pull people in on the first aisle in, but I don't know, we, you know, we can't really guarantee how well that will work. I think the biggest factor really is that we, we are going to be supplying entertainment or fun to people who are in those buildings. Those kind of people, they're in the buildings in the daytime. When those buildings are closed and off duty, those people come to us, and that's why there shouldn't be much conflict in the parking lot in general.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hi, what's going on? Sorry.
You know what, I apologize. Sir, if you could come back up for one moment, Chairman.
Sorry, I just had a, I was, when you were up there before, I was just curious about the, you, you mentioned about the sound dampening on the walls around there. What about the vibrations? Is that ever been a problem, or, because I noticed you have a shared wall here with vacant space?
It hasn't been a problem. Sound is vibration, but we don't get it through the walls currently at our current facility, because we do have extra insulation and extra double-thick sheet rock to, to try to knock, you know, block it.
Okay.
So it's not currently a problem.
Okay. Just curious, thank you.
Thanks, Chairman. So we'll bring it back if there's any other comments.
Can I ask him a couple questions?
That's true. I thought you already went, no?
Well, no, he, now that he's up, I've got a couple questions.
Let's, let's take down the road.
Yeah, I don't want him to sit down, I mean, he came all the way.
Went out of order.
How many go-karts are you going to run in there?
Each track, we're going to have two tracks. Each track will have a maximum of 10 go-karts running at a time, so there could be up to 20 go-karts. What typically happens is people come in groups. They come in groups of four or five. So when you come in a group of four, and there's two spots left in a race, they're not going in it. So our average fill factor per race is between seven and eight go-karts. So typically, we'll probably be, on a busy day, running 15 go-karts at a time, but once in a while, it'll go a bit more than that.
So, does that go all day? I mean, I guess you hope it goes all day, huh?
We wish, but the, weekends are the busiest by far. More than 50% of our business is Saturday and Sunday. Typically, Saturday's probably about 35% of the business. Typically, Sunday's about 25% of the business. The weekdays can vary, but they're really averaging only about 5% to 10% per weekday of the business.
And I, I noticed a comment in here that we're running fuel, but the fuels, the environmental thing, but still gas, I mean, gas is natural.
It is not gasoline. It is E85 biofuel, which is ethanol.
Right.
It is much, much cleaner to burn. The, to, to let you understand how much cleaner it is, in Burlingame, we used to run gasoline. A couple of years ago, we converted. We run the standard indoor parking garage systems for our air, which turns on the fans at 25 parts per million. So we had that standard system in place for the gas go-karts, gasoline. When we converted to ethanol, to the E85, running our standard fan system, they quit turning on, because there wasn't enough carbon monoxide generated to trigger the automatic switch. So we had to switch from a sniffer switch that turned on at 25 parts per million of carbon monoxide, to just a motion sensor. So every time go-karts are on the track, the motion sensor turns them on, and they stay on until six minutes after the last go-kart goes by.
Fuel still flammable?
It is still flammable. E85 is 85% ethanol and 15% gasoline, so it has a much lower vapor release, therefore it is much less flammable, but it is definitely still flammable.
I didn't see where you were storing it, except in 55 gallon container, or 55 gallon-
255 gallon drums stored in a, a tub container, so if the drums got holes in them, it would just leak into the tub, which then would contain it.
All right. I'll have to ask our staff, but I mean, why wouldn't you have a regular convault system there to contain the fuel?
We could-
55 gallon drum is pretty-
We, we could do that if that's what the staff really wants.
Well, I mean, that's pretty dangerous, just to have them in a 55 gallon drum as compared to a convault.
Yes, I, I can agree with that to a point.
I don't even know where you're storing it. I didn't see that.
We're in a, we're going to, the plan currently shows a storage container, a metal storage container, just outside the back door, outside the building, and that storage container is going to have one of the Halon fire extinguisher systems in it, so if any-
I think if you're going to have it outdoors-
Yes.
I'd rather see it in some sort of a container that is built to contain fuel, rather than a 55 gallon drum that kids could play with. I guess my next question will deal with the air circulation, and we're bringing it in one end and blowing it out. What are we blowing it to? Who's going to smell this?
The backside of the building, which is by the levee.
Don't we have to have any filtration type system on that at all?
It's actually-
I think that, you know, I, and my question would be to Kathy, is that we should be talking to Yolo Solano, you know, about whether or not taking all these fumes and blowing them into the open air without any filtration at all is something we can do.
It's actually about, eight go-karts equals about the same emissions as a current new car.
That's not bad. So, I, I just, it's strictly a question, because I noticed that they really didn't respond to this at all, and I thought the fuel issue and the exhaust issue were both things that we should ask for a comment on when, before it comes back.
Actually, Yolo Solano was the first people that we actually contacted in terms of this project, and they actually told me they don't believe they're going to have any comments, that they look at it very similar as they would a, a parking garage, but the initial studies going out tomorrow, they will definitely get a copy of it and have a chance to respond.
Kathy, I think both my questions, the exhaust may not be an issue at all. I think the fuel in a 55 gallon drum outside the building probably will be an issue with them, because I don't think they allow that.
I, I did note your comments on that, and it will get reflected in the staff report.
And it's not a big deal either way, I don't think. It's just a matter of a safety issue there. My last question is, I see that we're trying to accumulate a couple parking spots along the left side of the building?
Those are meant for employees, is the concept there?
Good idea. But the only thing that concerned me is there was a, like an entryway that was going into the building, and it was going right onto the track area?
It's actually going to be an emergency exit only. It's not going to be used-
It doesn't say that. It says entryway on it, I think. Let me put my glasses back on, okay? I can read this little tiny print. Accessible path. So, and it probably is, it's going to be an emergency exit, but it doesn't say that, and I was just kind of curious, I don't think that would be the entryway you'd want them-
No, that's not where we're planning on letting anybody in.
Okay, I'm done.
Well, before I let you go, any other questions for the applicant? So I actually do have one other question. At your current facility, do you maintain the drums, or do you maintain the convault system that Charlie was referring to?
We did actually, and still do have a convault system. No one will deliver in the peninsula, E85 fuel to us, so we changed to 55 gallon drums because of that. So we can go either way. We're fine with a convault system.
So that's not, that's not a cost issue?
Not really. It's, we found that doing two 55 gallon drums and going and picking it up is easy and convenient, and, and it's not a problem. So, but we can, we could go with a convault system if that's required.
So, David, we're not obviously taking any kind of vote tonight, so we'll inform the, the audience at a public hearing, will be scheduled up for October 17, 2013 on this matter?
We would ask that you take any, if there are any additional public comment tonight from any, anyone else in the audience?
I have no request to speak at this time.
All right. Then, yes, we are planning a public hearing on October 17 on this particular project.
Okay. So, thank you to the applicant. We will move on to item number three, the public hearing regarding wireless telecommunications facility policy update, and that's Kathy as well?
Yes, Kathy Allen, Associate Planner, and our newest staff member, Seamus Laffey, will provide a joint presentation on this one. Kathy will be introducing the project, giving you some background on what we have accomplished previously, and Seamus will touch on a lot of the parts that are new, and then Kathy will close that out.
Good evening again. The city's wireless policy was originally adopted back in 1997, and hasn't been formally updated since that time. Since 1997, wireless technology has changed greatly, as has society's demand for both wireless and data services. Staff did bring changes to the commission in 2011, and on September 15 of that year, the commission voted to approve Resolution 114 PC, which recommended that the city council adopt the changes to the policy, as the commission heard them at that time. In October 2011, staff presented the changes to the city council, and while the council was generally receptive to the changes, they did request additional changes regarding placement of facilities within the urban core, in the central business district, and waterfront zones. The council felt that typically, wireless facilities such as monopoles and towers were not appropriate for these locations, and requested that staff research alternatives. After the council workshop, staff paused its efforts on this item, primarily due to budget constraints and other priorities. Staff has recently revisited this policy and completed the revisions as the council had requested. The policy being reviewed- The policy being reviewed tonight by the commission is essentially the same one that the commission approved back in two thousand eleven, uh, with the additions as requested by the council. Staff conducted, uh, research on different methods that provide cellular coverage that would also provide the enhanced aesthetics, uh, that the council had requested. Staff discovered during its research that many cities now use distributed antennas systems, commonly known as D.A.S., and these are frequently used in urban settings. D.A.S. can accommodate two to six carriers on each poles and have a range of approximately a quarter mile for each facility. Um, they're usually mounted on top of light poles or utility poles, and tend to extend a few feet above the pole. And currently, the city of Davis is in the process of installing twenty-three of these facilities in their urban core. With the D.A.S. technology in mind, staff made revisions to the policy to address council's concerns, and, uh, now, Seamus will, uh, give you an overview of the major changes that we made to the policy since you heard it last.
Good evening. So, in order to accommodate and encourage this new type of wireless facility in West Sacramento, staff is proposing the following addition to the, additions to the wireless policy. So, the first, uh, addition is to Section C, under the definition section, and we will be adding a new definition for microcell. The second, um, addition is to Section F, and staff is proposing to add microcells to the list of wireless facilities that only require zoning administrator approval. And this is to speed up the approval process and encourage development of microcells. And this would be in line with other wireless facilities that only require zoning administrator approval and do not stand out visually in a significant way, such as the roof-mounted and facade-mounted facilities. Um, the last section that we will be changing is Section I, which is the Wireless Telecommunications Facilities Design, and staff is proposing to create a hierarchy of preferred wireless facilities, with the, uh, with the first listed being the most preferred. So, while, microcells will be the most preferred, and then roof-mounted, facade-mounted, and then freestanding tower being the least preferred. Um, also added into this section is that if a freestanding tower is proposed, the applicant shall provide evidence as to why no other alternative could be, um, constructed. So, with that, I'd like to turn it back to Kathy.
And that basically concludes staff's presentation. Staff respectfully request that the commission approve Resolution thirteen-six P.C., subject to the findings as identified in the report. Uh, Seamus and I would be happy to answer any questions from the commission at this time.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Seamus. So, we'll bring it back to the commission, and I will start with, uh, with Charlie.
Okay. Since you asked, I didn't understand your last comment.
Oh.
So, if the last comment says that we're not gonna allow freestanding towers anywhere in the city?
Yeah, let me clarify on the last, the last comment. So, um, the applicant should provide evidence as to why no other alternative is practical or feasible. Um, so, they need to provide evidence that, uh, roof-mounted, or facade-mounted, or DOS system would not be feasible for cellular, cellular coverage?
So, we're trying not to have a freestanding tower?
Correct, correct, yeah. We're trying not to have the, the large monopole freestanding towers.
Even if they're hidden like our water tank is?
Well, hidden is a kind of loaded term. Uh, it, it is stealthed in a sense, although I, I doubt that many people don't know what it actually is. We were trying to create a hierarchy of visually pleasing alternatives, from the most pleasing to the least, uh, hoping that would en- encourage people, when they come to us, to pick the more visually pleasing options, and, and if they...
And we did.
...don't think that is feasible, they'll have to give us some concrete reasons why the other types won't work.
Can, one of these little things on top of a light pole is gonna serve as six different carriers? Is that what you just said?
They can serve between two and six carriers, yes.
Where is all their equipment?
Um, it's actually in the, the part that extends on the top, and there is a, a sleeve that actually goes around the pole itself that contains the rest of the equipment.
Because, I mean, in our other facilities, we have large buildings, and we won't have any buildings then.
Yeah, the, the notion of these concepts is that you're really taking one of those large towers where everything is concentrated in one location, and in this case, you know, they'll have multiple sites, so they sort of break those up. So, that's sort of the trade-off, is that they need to have more than one location to make these type of, you know, systems work, but by, you distribute to them as the name, you know, applies, it allows them to spread some of that out, so at each pole, you don't have those large radio units, you know, at the bottom of those, and then each carrier on there. So, uh, I, this is definitely a concept, um, it's exciting to see it in the real world, you know, just down, just down the road. Um, you know, we believe this ha- this particular application has potential, uh, for in our urban areas, but potentially in some of our, you know, residential neighborhoods, uh, as compared to, you know, some of the poles. If you recall, when we were working on that water tank, you know, project, uh, you know, it was, it was large. I mean, there's no pretending that no one was gonna be able to ever see it, and, but it was adjacent to residential area, and we struggled with that, you know, quite a bit at that time. And so, with this application and now becoming more, more of a reality, you know, we wanted to make sure that our policy could include this type of application if that's where a carrier wanted to go. Um, even though we're focusing on urban areas, this may have applications, you know, elsewhere in our city.
I think it's a great idea. I just don't know how it works, you know? So, I was trying to figure out how you would make that work, but if it's all on top of the pole, I think it's a great idea. So, thank you.
I don't have any comments. I'd just like to thank staff for the proposed amendments. Um, I hope that, that we could see more of these on the telephone poles. I'm assuming that instead of a large tower, you might have three light, light posts in a row having, you know, or three clusters of light posts in a row, substituting for a large, or the larger tower? Is that how the concept is?
Yeah, that's correct. And the, the radius for these DOS towers is about quarter-mile to a half-mile, so...
Okay, great. Thank you.
I would also like to thank staff, um, for the research, uh, put into this, and also, obviously, listening to the, the council's feedback. And I also think that having the hierarchy of our, kind of, our preferred design is very helpful to applicants coming forward to us, because it, it really has made it clear that, um, it, you know, if this moves forward, that the freestanding tower idea that we struggled with for many, I think, many months, last time one came to us, that that's actually the, kind of, our last option. It's our last preference. So, I, I really appreciate the work, and I'm supportive of this moving forward.
Russ?
Uh, just a simple question. Do the photos in the attachments represent the, the range of microcells that the city would consider? Uh, in other words, there are three poles showing, one is, uh, an antenna, and one is a larger antenna, and then one is an even larger antenna with additional equipment around it. Is that the range that we're looking at?
Those were the three test antennas that, uh, Davis installed, uh, as actually part of their CUP process for approving them. They actually, those three photos, none of those three towers are actually functional, but they installed them in different portions of the community to give the community a chance to see the, the various, the various types. They are utilizing all three of those. I don't pretend to know why there's, there's three different types, but I believe it has to do with the number of carriers. The, the one is significantly bigger, I believe that was the six-carrier model there.
Um, and then, well, the follow-up question to that would be, does the city have a preference over which models, uh, we're going to be considering?
They actually have quite a bit of flexibility about what they look like. Those are the three that, that Davis chose, but there's, uh, from our research, there are even more options out there. We just took the pictures of the ones in Davis, because obviously, they were close enough, close enough for us to get pictures of them and give you some idea of what their range of, what they could look like.
I'm, um, I'm okay with this being a zoning administrator action, uh, as far as the decision to allow for the, uh, permit of a microcell. I, I would like us to have a clear idea of what that means, and so, if this doesn't represent the range, then I'm not sure. Um, I'm okay with these. I don't know how else to say this. I, I'm not okay with, it could be something else, and it's a zoning administrator act, action. It'd be nice, uh, if, uh, if we had a little bit of a clear definition.
Yeah, I think, you know, tonight, you know, the, the goal here is to, you know, make sure that this microcell concept, uh, you know, is something we can entertain, and clearly, this is an industry that evolves, you know, very rapidly, and the, the exact applications of these will probably evolve, but it's, right now, we wanna make sure that, um, 'cause our, the way the policy was written before, it certainly could have been written that if somebody wanted to do this type of microcell concept, we may not have been able to entertain it under our, our old policy. So, our goal was to get it in there. I can certainly tell you that from, as a zoning administrator standpoint, um, if, you know, someone is bringing one of these types of applications in that, you know, isn't achieving our objective, which is trying to make it, you know, fit in with the landscape, um, then that application will likely find its way before you at the planning commission, um, for that additional, additional review at that time. Um, but we're certainly trying to encourage folks to go in this direction, particularly in urban applications, um, as we do believe this has some, some potential, you know, for us, and we can accommodate it, you know, rather than doing the traditional poles and trees and things. Just, we just don't see how those fit in, you know, like in the Bridge District, for example. I don't know if anybody wants to see a, you know, a monopine, you know, over there, you know, but something like this could, you know, could fit in pot, potentially.
But if they've designed something different than, you know, 'cause I mean, the industry changes so rapidly. If they've designed something different than what we're seeing here, then it will come to the planning commission, David?
Well, these photographs are, are meant to be representational of, you know, a couple of different applications that have been done in the, you know, in the, in the real world. What the policy tonight before you is, we're asking you to consider, is to have that, allow, allow that concept of this distributed antenna system, you know, in our policy. Uh, it still comes under, you know, discretionary review. Right now, we have to heat it up for the zoning administrator. That can, we certainly can change that part of it, if you wish, but we don't mean to imply that these photographs are necessarily the only way that these applications, you know, could be done, but we're fortunate to have these real-world examples.
Well, you know, and I think it's a good idea, but, and I would in, be in hopes that as technology changes pretty soon, we can just make it a zoning administrator item. I would just, if I was gonna err, I'd err on the side of caution, saying, the first one or two that come before you, I think we probably should see them, see what they really do, or what they're really proposing to look like.
Well, and, you know, the first one in the door, if we were to get one of these, um, you know, I, I probably would bring it up to the planning commission level, even if technically they could do it as zoning administrator. I'd probably wanna bring it up, you know, for your review, as a, as something new, uh, that, you know, we certainly would, wanna entertain. We certainly don't have anybody that's, you're knocking on our door for this, you know, right now, um, but I suspect as the Bridge District starts to go more vertical, we will see somebody, you know, fairly soon, want to do this. So, we're hoping tonight that the commission will be receptive to having this concept, you know, be part of our policy, and then when one comes to us in the real world, we'll evaluate the specifics, you know, then.
I'm, I'm definitely i- in favor of the policy, and I'm comfortable with that approach. Thank you.
Mr. Olson?
Uh, yeah, the, uh, the first two pieces is great work. It's, uh, I honestly, when I looked at the pictures, I got all the way to three before I even saw what you were talking about as far as the antenna goes. So, I mean, that's, you know, if that's what it looks like in the real world, then great. Um, the concern question that I have, though, is on part three here that we're talking about, why no other alternative is practical or technologically feasible? Now, I can see how technologically feasible can be demonstrated objectively, but where we kinda butted heads with, uh, uh, the prior applicant there a couple of years ago, was what is practical? Now, it seems like, to me, their definition of practical is the cheapest, and where this ca- where this, this commission's practical concern also has to include the aesthetically pleasing, and I would not want to give up, um, you know, the conditional use process for the monopoles and some of the questionable, um, disguised, um, freestanding towers. So, that's, that's all I have.
Our, our review of wireless facilities is principally, you know, limited to almost entirely on, on aesthetics, under how a lot of the state and federal preemptions are on here. So, uh, it's why we're not necessarily trying to, you know, outrightly, you know, prohibit certain applications, but trying to steer folks into applications that, you know, we feel are more likely to pass some of our aesthetic, you know, tests here in the community. Um, but we certainly can put the onus on the, on very, on the carriers to, you know, explain why they wanna go somewhere, why they can't, why they say they have to do this particular application, can't do another one that is more favorable to, uh, you know, we would think would be more favorable design. But our, our review on these is generally limited to aesthetics, you know, of the facilities, and so, uh, we do have to be somewhat careful when we start getting into their technologies and of that nature, because, you know, they have, you know, a fair amount of protection, you know, under state and federal law.
So, so David, uh, if you didn't feel that option one was aesthetically acceptable in a neighborhood, you could, you can, uh, guide them to a different option? You have that?
Well, that's our goal, and that's exactly what we did with the, um, the, the water tank, which all along had been proposed as a mo- as a, you know, a monopine, and, you know, we were not supportive of that particular design application, and so, we, we focused on design so much as, you know, a lot of folks didn't want it there, because it was close to their home and whatnot, but, you know, we tried to keep our review principally on an aesthetics basis, and they certainly demonstrate, could demonstrate on that particular project that they had a, you know, a gap that they were trying to fill in coverage. And so, they, we were able to, and I, I hope most folks feel that the, the water tank design that was ultimately constructed, uh, hopefully was more favorable than what a monopine would have been at that particular location. And so, that was the emphasis of our review of that project, and so, um, similarly, going forward here, you know, we'd like to be able to encour- you know, encourage folks toward the microcell concept, if it's, if it's practical, you know, in, in the right areas.
So, I, I hope I understood, Jeremy, what you, that option's open to go another way, they're not locked in? Is that what you were...
Right. In regard to the monopoles and, and the scenario that, that we're talking about here, like the water tower, I wouldn't want to see our commission give up the commission, the conditional use process.
No, we, and we aren't proposing that now, nor were we previously. We're actually trying to make the review procedure a little bit easier for those types of applications...
Sure.
...that we have found, and the commission has expressed to be more desirable, such as the facade mounts and roof mounts, and hiding them inside the tower at Nugget, and the Israeli Field scoreboard, and things like that. It's one where people wanna plop just a pole down in the, kind of, in the middle of town, where we wanna maintain the maximum discretion over that as possible. where we want to maintain the maximum discretion over that as possible. But that discretion is limited principally to aesthetics.
And that's the scenario I'm talking about. If a project were proposed and we noticed it the correct way, you know, somebody that lives 200 feet or whatever it is would be able to say, hey, this doesn't look right here. And they would, the process would still be there just for the monopole and the, you know, the big towers. They'd be able to come in and say, hey, we object to this.
Absolutely, and if they object on aesthetic grounds, then those are valid objections.
Sure.
So, thank you. So at this time, if there's no other comments, we'll open the public hearing. I'll reserve my comments. And we have nobody that wishes to speak, so we will close the public hearing and bring it back. So I just have a couple of comments. I like the water tower. I think it looks pretty good. Maybe you can just educate me here. Facade mounted and freestanding tower, which one does the monopine fall under? Facade mounted or freestanding? That's freestanding.
Well, it would be freestanding.
Okay, all right. So as I recall, when we discussed this issue, and one of the things, I think Charlie touched on it, this technology changes so quickly that we may have a better technology in two months or three months. Is there a regular review of this as those technologies come forward? And are you going to obviously bring those to us?
Unfortunately, there has not been. We would like to be able to, you know, keep this as up to date as it possibly can. We'll never be 100% on the tail of the, you know, the way this industry evolves. But we'd like to think we've at least advanced this from 1997 when it's current vintage.
Well, I mean, even from our last discussion, maybe this was mentioned, I don't recall this technology being discussed at our place.
Yeah, and I know that Commissioner Moore definitely touched on a related version of this at that time, and it was still kind of embryonic at that time, but it certainly has come to life, you know, since that time. And so we will endeavor to keep this policy as fresh and contemporary as we possibly can as these technologies evolve, and, so they certainly will continue to evolve in ways we probably can't even imagine.
No, I would imagine we're going to get to some point where we're not even talking about mounting these, and it's going to be another route. So one of the other things that I recall when we were talking about the technology and, I think Seamus mentioned it earlier, talking about the quarter-mile radius, that the radius was really dependent upon usage. So these towers can only handle so much activity, and then you need another tower. And in theory, at that time, I think one of the comments was, look, we could put up the monopine or the water tower, and we could have such growth or such growth in usage that we would need another one down the road to cover.
Well, I do think that is one of the trade-offs on these antenna systems here, is that, you know, these will not be 75 or 80 feet in the air potentially. And if they're in urban applications, you're going to have taller buildings that may obstruct.
Right. So these could pop up. We could have quite a few of these in a, in a.
That's conceivable, and, you know, that's kind of the trade-off for not, but hopefully in a more urban setting, we'll also have the opportunity for more roof mount and facade mount operations, where in most of our suburban neighborhoods, we just don't have that. So I think this, I'm hoping that this type of application in a more suburban residential setting, if it were proposed there, hopefully could be complementary to, you know, the larger poles, you know, that still go up.
So I think this is a good option, considering what we went through last year. And I guess, you'll have to excuse my layman's knowledge of this, but has there been any, you read a lot in the news about health risks related to cell phone and cell phone towers. And now that we may have the, a bunch of them popping up in an urban core area, are there, is there anything out there current?
There may be some things out there. Under federal law, we cannot consider those types of things in our review of these projects. So we're specific.
I appreciate you keeping on track with that. I just, it seems to be something you read about all the time.
I felt the city attorney wanting to jump in on that, so I.
Well, thank you. Thank you. All right, so we'll bring this back. If there's no other comments, I'll look for a.
I'll move the recommended action.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sandin, a second by Commissioner Leibig. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All who's against? Any abstentions? So we will go to item number, where are we at here? Four. Item number four, the Public Workshop on Proposed Emergency Shelter and Zoning Ordinance Changes and Additions. And David, I think you have this one?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Commissioner Gavon. Tonight, we are here tonight in a workshop format on some changes to our zoning ordinance that we wish to consider as they relate to emergency shelters. As a, one of the programs in our recently adopted housing element, and as well as a, excuse me, as a subset of the city's larger homeless strategy, which was presented last night to the city council, we do want to potentially make some changes to what zones emergency shelters could be located in and to entertain having some objective standards that would be applicable to them should they, one, ever be developed here in West Sacramento. Under state law, which was passed as SB 2 back in 2008, and then since been codified in the government code 65583, provides the parameters by which the local governments can regulate emergency shelters. And so tonight, under that premise of, you know, what we can and cannot do under state law, we do want to potentially make some zoning ordinance changes. As you see from the staff report tonight, homelessness is a, you know, significant issue here in West Sacramento and the county as well. It should not come as a surprise to everyone. West Sacramento does have a fairly large percentage of the total homeless population in Yolo County, and of that population, the vast majority of it is unsheltered. And so it certainly stands to reason that if the larger homeless strategy that the city is considering does yield that it may be a desirable policy goal someday to have a shelter here in our community, we do want to make sure that we are better prepared for that. When SB 2 was passed in 2008, which was also during our last housing element cycle, in the aftermath of that, we made some quick zoning ordinance changes to allow emergency shelters in numerous zones so that we could comply with SB 2 as it was understood back at the time. And so under our current zoning ordinance, they are permitted in nearly all of our residential areas and several commercial and mixed-use zones. And we're actually proposing to make some changes to that so that they may no longer be permitted in our, most of our residential zones, and that they can be allowed under certain contexts in some of our industrial and heavy commercial zones. In addition to that, we are also proposing some, you know, development standards that would go along with shelters, both the small shelters, which would be 24 or fewer beds, and then the larger shelters, which would be 24 or more beds. As far as the commission is aware, the Broderick Christian Center, for a long time now, has been planning to develop a shelter at its particular location. I'm talking with the city's building official today. That project is more or less, has been approved by building. There's some details that need to be sorted out. So we assume that the Broderick Christian Center project, you know, will proceed at its location. And this particular ordinance is in no way, shape, or form designed or intended to impair or stall Roger Christian Center's efforts to construct the facility that they wish to construct. And also tonight, we did receive some late correspondence from Mr. Peterson. We have been only be able to review that briefly for you this evening, but this was some documentation that was provided to the city council at one of the earlier meetings, you know, earlier this year. And so I'm certain Mr. Peterson, on behalf of the Metro Place Homeowners Association, can elaborate on that during public comment. So there's two parts to the proposed ordinance. The first part is making adjustments as to what zones these would be allowed in. Under SB 2, there has to be at least one zone in the city where they are allowed by right. And other zones, they may be allowed in on a conditional basis or not allowed at all. So additionally, within there, we have some what we believe to be objective, you know, development standards and operating standards that would be applicable to a shelter should one be opened here in our community. And so we have those listed in the draft ordinance. We'll do anything a little bit out of order, based on the scheduling. We do want to take your input here this evening. I will also be presenting this ordinance to the Housing Advisory Commission this coming Monday. And so I will present any input from the commission that we received tonight to hack on Monday. And then conversely, when we bring this ordinance back to the planning commission, likely next month, then I will provide to you what the substance of the discussion was from the Housing Advisory Commission, so that, you know, you can have the whole of the background behind this, because, obviously, this is a very complicated, you know, issue, and our city is struggling with it right now. So that's the substance of our ordinance tonight and the discussion. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and we would ask you also to take any public comment this evening.
Yeah, hi. Good evening. Steve Peterson with the Metro Place at Washington Square Homeowners Association. I believe you have a copy of a letter that we provided to council back in April on the issue of a request.
Steve, can you turn on your mic, please?
It's on.
It's on.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. Yeah, I believe you have a copy of a letter that we provided to council. We've been involved in homeless strategy discussions the last five or six months, along with our other neighbors in the Broderick community. And we've been very concerned about the expansion of the current location at Sixth Street. So I'll set that aside for the moment, but our request was to, for the city to adopt current standards. We, I've been living in the community for, you know, 10 years. We have a new development. We have to meet current standards, including occupancy restrictions in our development. So it's rather ironic that a shelter is going in under the current ordinance that has no standards. But it is before you tonight, at least in terms of some updates to your code, and I would certainly endorse the changes that are being proposed, including the, you know, the prohibition within single-family neighborhoods. I think there's plenty of locations in the city, either industrial areas or other areas of the city, that would be much more appropriate for this kind of a use, both for the clients as well as the neighbors that reside around these facilities. So we certainly support that. And in terms of minimum standards, if you live around some of these facilities, there's a lot of issues with dogs, with waiting areas, with lighting, with security. There's impacts on the public right-of-ways because people are just loitering out in the streets. We've had a variety of problems with, you know, impacts on adjacent property owners, et cetera. So we think all the standards that are included are appropriate as well. We, you know, the ordinance that is before you, actually, I worked on when I was with the city of Sacramento. I'm glad to see that you're looking at that, because I think in Sacramento, there was a real effort to try to manage these facilities in a way that were more complementary to the whole community, rather than trying to over-concentrate them within particular neighborhoods. So I'm glad to see that the ordinance is before you. You know, again, I, you know, it's, as I say, it's kind of ironic, because we did request five months ago that the council take up an ordinance. We do ask that if you're going to adopt an ordinance, that you apply it to a project to make it relevant. Unfortunately, at this late date, if it's true that the building department has actually approved this project, I'm very sorry to hear that. I think that it could be constructed as an emergency ordinance. We're dealing with public health and safety issues in the neighborhood, and we would certainly prefer, if you're going to adopt an ordinance, that you apply it to projects that are currently under review. So anyway, with that, I'll be happy to take any questions or, do you have any questions, folks? No?
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll bring it back. We'll close public comment. And Charlie, I'll start with you.
My first comment is, I can't have a comment on your letter, because I just got it, and I don't, obviously haven't had time to even look at it here. So that's the reason I wouldn't be able to comment on it. David, I guess my question to you is, I mean, obviously, the city can't resolve the homeless problem. I mean, we don't have nearly enough money to handle that. So is it required that, is this a state thing that we're trying to cover, is putting them in a zone?
Well, the state doesn't say we have to have a shelter. The state says we have to have at least one zone where they are allowed by right.
Okay.
And so we have, and we have, right, currently, we have several zones where they're allowed by right. So we're trying to change which zones they are allowed by right in. But it doesn't mean that we have to have one, per se.
We don't have to have a zone that?
Well, no, we don't have to have, actually have a shelter located and constructed here, but we have to, from a zoning standpoint, show that we have at least one zone where they would be allowed by right.
Okay.
Without discretionary review, I should say.
And knowing full well that we're trying to do that, you know, of course, we talked about the issue before as being the Broderick Christian Center in a residential zone, I mean, is that going to be something that we can even look at?
I think that the planning commission needs to look at this ordinance in isolation of the Broderick Christian Center, because that project, to the extent that it's meeting its requirements and moving forward, needs to be handled independently. The intent of this ordinance, however, is twofold. Number one, to ensure that the city is complying with SB 2, which, as David previously mentioned, requires that we identify at least one zoning designation, which emergency shelters are allowed without any type of permitting. And that's it. I think I've lost my train of thought, but.
No, that's fine. I was just, you know, I was reading this report. I found the report to be quite interesting, and then the one that was on the internet that went to the council was quite interesting, that one of the major reasons we have homelessness in West Sacramento was something about they couldn't qualify for their first month's rent or something. Do you know what I'm talking about? But it was a financial issue that they didn't have the whereabouts to qualify. And I was going, boy, if we were ever to do anything to help the homeless situation, since we, the last low-income project we had, we had to advertise outside our own community to get people to come to West Sacramento, it would seem that we should be concentrating our efforts in that direction for low-income housing.
Well, yeah, certainly, the, you know, the makeup of our homeless population is very diverse, and the circumstances that have brought folks, you know, into that situation, you know, are broad. It is more, you know, in many cases, there are much more to it than just purely, you know, economics.
Absolutely.
And so it is a very complex issue, and I certainly encourage anyone on the council to, I mean, excuse me, the planning commission to, you know, read the staff report and watch the video from last night's, you know, council meeting where they were looking at this homeless strategy, you know, in its totality. Because it was, it's clear even with a total strategy, it remains being a very complex, you know, issue without a doubt. There is.
It's probably something we never resolve fully, ever.
Yeah, I don't know that anyone is expecting to, but, you know.
But it was just, I was making the comment, I mean, I think you've done a fine job, as best we can do with this issue. My comment was that in the report that you gave to council, there was something talking about the major reason people didn't get into a housing project. And it was all financial. It was, either they didn't. It was either they didn't... Wish I knew how to make a copy off my computer, David, but you're lucky I got on the computer, and you know that. But, you know, so it's unfair. But on that report, there was one little section that said the reason they didn't have that was the fact that they couldn't qualify financially.
Well, it's... We certainly do struggle with, you know, many folks, even if they are in the income ranges for some of our affordable complexes, they still have... They may have poor credit history, they may have poor, you know, rental referrals...
Maybe it was credit history. It could have been as simple as that.
And that's, you know, that's very common, and we have some folks that end up overpaying to live in certain places, especially in some of the motels, because they have... They don't have a good rental history, or they have a poor credit history. And those communities that we have, they certainly do have some degree of screening, you know, on their applicants. And so that's, you know, that makes us... Definitely makes this even more of a challenge than it would otherwise have been. But so tonight, we do want to focus on, you know, the, you know, areas for where... Zones, at least, where we think shelters, you know, could be workable, and those criteria that we would want to apply to them for development and operating standards within the bounds of what the government code and SB 2, you know, allow us to do. And so that's really...
In order that I not get off track, and I probably have been for you, and I didn't mean to do that, I was just trying to read what you've given me. I think that what you're trying to do is what we're trying to accomplish, and that's get it into a zone where it's not a residential zone and affecting so many people. So I think what you've done is a fine job. And I'm done.
Thank you.
I have no comment.
I want to thank staff for working on the SB 2 compliance, as well as Mr. Peterson for his testimony and comments this evening, and his prior work in the city of Sacramento, and for sharing some background experiences in his neighborhood. I'm wondering, David, if this goes typically... I know our city has a pretty close relationship with the business community in the Chamber of Commerce. I'm wondering, because this is... Also has some impact in local businesses, if there'll be time for them to comment. But prior to it coming back to us, just in terms of, is this the best zone from the business perspective for the locations?
Yeah, well, we can work on more focused outreach in that regard. I know that they have... Certainly have been part of the overall homeless kind of working group that has been going on, and that our housing group has been managing. But we will look into that more specifically as it pertains to this before we come back.
I think I would appreciate that. I just think in advance of having the final comeback, I think doing a little bit of... Just getting some consensus around the location would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. I'm in full support of the direction that this is going. Thank you.
Jeremy?
Yeah, it looks like this is headed in a good direction there with the meeting last night from the city council and all that. They focused on the cooperative efforts, I think, with the county, and they really highlighted the multi-facets to homelessness, as far as drug use and poverty and that sort of, you know, all the related stuff that goes along with that. And I would just think that, you know, from a zoning perspective, near or, you know, right next to where those services are being offered would be an ideal spot to satisfy SB 2, I think you said? I mean, the... You know, if that could happen.
Yeah, we certainly would hope that if we were having a shelter, it would be located in an area where those, you know, necessary services would be as readily accessible...
Is that doable through zoning, to say, hey, we already have these existing services?
Well, we certainly did look where those are located in town and the zoning that's surrounding there, to make sure those zones were included.
But specifically say, this service already exists for this purpose, we would like this to exist here also?
Well, from at least from a zoning level, we're still a little bit higher up than... Higher up in the, kind of in the latter than that, so... But we wanted to make sure that those zones that are where... Are either in or adjacent to where the services are located in our community, you know, such as the social services that are at Triangle Court and Jefferson, the county facility, that those areas that have a... That are maybe adjacent to there, that those zones were included in this, so we could at least, you know, get down to that level. And then once a particular site is identified, you know, then we'll zero in at that time. But, you know, for example, if anyone... Right now, most of those zones that are around where the social services office one couldn't do a shelter under our current ordinance.
Right.
And, you know, we don't feel like that is probably where we want to be. You know, so we'd like to make sure that if a shelter ever were to be located in our community, that it would be located where services are most readily accessible, and it would be the least impactful on, you know, surrounding properties and neighborhoods. There's no... This is... Never would be easy to cite one of these, but if we were to have one in town, we'd certainly want it in the most optimal location. And so we tried to include those zones in here where... That are in or are adjacent to where the most services are offered, as a way to hopefully engender landing, if we were to do a shelter, that it would be in a location where it would be accessible to the services that the clients would likely very well need.
Okay. David, I just have a couple of questions, and I hope I get these zones right, but the R3, R4, the multifamily, why are we including them? Is there a thought process behind that? If we are hitting in...
Well, I mean, our goal was to, you know, make sure that, you know, we were at least entertaining the concept on a... Still on a relatively broad basis, because we did want to, you know, not having done, like, gone out and done a market survey of what properties are actually, you know, available on the market, and not necessarily having a great big deal of insight about really how much property, you know, one would really need to operate a facility, you know, properly. We did not want to get too restrictive on this, because we do need to make sure that it's not just a zoning exercise, but that in the real world, you know, properties, you know, that meet these criteria, we need to make sure are actually available or exist. So it's not that dissimilar to the exercise we have to go through every so often when adult uses are proposed. You know, we have pretty significant restrictions on where they can go, but we need to make sure in the real world that there actually are sites that are zoned where they could go, at least, you know, theoretically.
Right.
So... But if the commission were interested in becoming somewhat more restrictive in terms of what zones these could go in, we certainly could entertain that.
So since we're giving you comment tonight, I prefer to see a little more restriction in the zones, and I would... I would look at those two zones, that zone specifically, in the multifamily.
You're speaking of the R3 and R4?
R3, R4, yeah.
Now, see, when I read that, David, I was thinking that you were thinking if there was a large apartment complex, you might include that in that. Was that our thought?
Well, I guess that's conceivable. I mean, that wasn't where you're going, but, you know, certainly our multifamily zones...
Some of the problems that Mr. Peterson mentioned tonight, which are concern to homeowners, would also be concerns to folks in those areas as well.
Yeah, so I want to bring this forward tonight, you know, on this first, you know, workshop basis. We took our first, you know, cut at this. Certainly, if the commission wanted to not even be conditional on R3 or R4, it certainly would be possible. We're still showing at least two zones where they'd be allowed by right, so we'd still be at least on the surface compliant with the government code.
So that would be my comment. Are you just looking for comment tonight and input and...
Yes, want to be able to take your input tonight to work on this some more, report it to Hack on Monday.
I appreciate that. So I had a couple of questions regarding... It looked like you had some, for lack of a better term, conditions here. Would it be appropriate to put in this, as far as the requirements, limiting intake hours? So these are overnight... Are these overnight facilities? They're not permanent residential facilities, correct?
No, these are the... That's correct, but they are overnight, you know, facilities.
So it's transitional overnight, and then they come in and they go out and...
Well, they would allow stay for overnight. It's not just a day shelter operation, but this is some... This is not transitional housing where people would, you know, live...
Sure.
You know, on a more semi-permanent basis. The term emergency shelter just truly is where...
So would it...
I'm sorry. Go ahead, I apologize.
Would it be appropriate to put in limiting intake hours? Time in and time out, so there's not traffic... There's not, you know, folks coming out...
Yeah, that is one of the...
Beyond emergency need.
Yeah, that is one of the development standards, subsection C, where they will need to set those hours for when they can, you know, intake and discharge.
So I did see that, but would it be inappropriate, or would it not be feasible to limit those hours to a certain time in this, so that everybody meets...
Yeah, we could potentially do that.
In essence, they could set hours, but they could set them wherever they wanted to, as opposed to maybe refining that a little bit so you don't have... Just a thought, just a thought. And would it also be appropriate to require some sort of security element?
Yeah, we do have a reference in subsection D to their onsite personnel. We're definitely trying to, you know, make sure we include objective development standards as... And the key to these is that whatever standards we need to have here would be... Need to be comparable to those that we would apply to other types of uses, you know, in that same zone. So we need to be... Yeah, I mean, security is something that we certainly can do. We're trying to be careful to make sure we fall... Still fall within this concept of these objective, you know, development standards. But security, certainly, we can certainly entertain.
So I appreciate that again, and just giving comment, and something that I'd like you to consider, that would be one of the elements that I think would be, if appropriate, something we should consider. Sometimes, you know, visual security is a deterrent to any issues you may have. I think that is all I have, is the other question I had is just requiring, like we do with many businesses, maintaining the area in a neat, sort of clean manner, you know, fixing broken, whatever it may be, and graffiti and that type of stuff.
Yeah.
I know we require that businesses in the...
Yeah. Yeah, Title 19, our nuisance abatement code includes entire section on property maintenance that applies across the board.
Okay.
So we feel like we'd be covered there in this regard.
So those would be my comments. Is there any further comment by commission? Okay. Do you need us to go through that, David? Have you got all that?
Yes, I have it, thank you.
So you don't need any type of movement here by us, right?
No, we will return. We're going to go to Hack, and we'll endeavor to do the outreach that Commissioner Sandin, you know, suggested this evening, and work on some of these other changes, and then we'll return to you at a hopefully not-too-distant future meeting.
Thank you. So we will move on to general administrative... Administration function and the informal discussion.
David, in one of the packets, one of the workshops states that it'll be coming back to us on October 3, but I had a different notice saying that the October 3 meeting was canceled.
Yeah, that is incorrect. That was a change we made after the staff report was published, so we will endeavor to get it back on October 17, which is when we will meet again. We'll see if we make that or not, but that is our objective at this time. We did cancel October 3.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
In honor of Cindy, please.
In honor of Cindy, seconded by Commissioner Sandin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say aye, and carries. We are adjourned. Let me hit the gavel.